Good evening, everybody. Before we get started, I'd like to welcome Pastor Jason Howard with Stone Creek Church to lead us in an invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. If we all could bow our heads. Dear wise and loving Father, let me say thank you on behalf of all gathered here today. In our season of Thanksgiving, we want to thank you for the many blessings that you've given us, for life itself and the measure of health that we need to fulfill our callings. I pray for provision and your friendship, and in the scriptures, you've told us that we should be citizens who should obey our governing authorities, and you've established those authorities to promote peace and order and justice. And so I pray for Mayor Joe Lockwood and for all the various levels of city officials, those gathered here tonight, and also spread across the city of Milton. I also pray for our assembled council, Councilwoman Thurmond, Councilman Hewitt, and Longoria and Coontz, Lusk, and Morrig. And I ask that you graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, and a keen thirst for justice and rightness. I pray for confidence in what is good and fitting, and the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, and also pray for personal peace and joy in their lives and their tasks. And finally, I pray for the agenda set before them today. Give them assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around this city, the city with the best quality of life in the state of Georgia. And it's in your most blessed name that I pray. Amen.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, November 16th, 2015, to order. Hope the city clerk will please call the roll and make any general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the November 16th, 2015, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on an item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that their speaker cards are received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided that the individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurmond.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Coontz.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Lusk.
Here.
Councilmember Burke Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morrig.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome, everybody. We appreciate you being here tonight. And, City, if you'll please call our first item. The agenda.
Next item is approval of meeting agenda, Agenda Item Number 15-288.
Okay. Anybody, staff, I know we need to add an executive session?
We actually don't. The other two items we'd like to do, which is, well, you can read it if you'd like, but we don't need the executive session.
Okay, all right. It's recommended to move the Agenda Item Number 15-294, consideration to amend Chapter 50 subdivisions and create Section 50-162 Rural Design under first presentation to new business after the Agenda Item 15-297, and also to move the new business Agenda Item Number 15-298, consideration of a resolution appointing members to the City of Milton Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee after the consent agenda. Is there anything, Council? Rick?
If I could just hold off on mine, that's listed in there, but my appointee?
Okay, yeah. Joe?
Yeah, I was trying to understand the piece about moving the first presentation. You were saying moving it after unfinished business? Or, I thought you said moving into unfinished business.
Moving into new business.
So, Councilmember, the purpose of that was, at the work session of last week, I thought the council's direction was that you wanted to remand that to the Planning Commission for their review. This will allow you to do that remanding tonight as opposed to having to wait until December the 7th. That's what the intent was, if that was the direction from the council. If you don't intend to do that, then I would leave it where it is. But if you intend on moving forward, as I thought we were directed last week, that was the process.
I'll open the council. Any more comments, Joe? You want to say anything?
No, no, I don't remember it that way, but I'm okay with that if that's what the rest of the council wants to do, so I'm okay with moving it that way.
Is staff ready to make a presentation?
Staff is not prepared based upon the direction that we thought we got last week. If you decide to make this move, it would be for the purpose of allowing the council to send it back to the Planning Commission. If you want a presentation on it, I'd ask you just to leave it first presentation tonight, and we can take it up on the meeting of December the 7th.
I see the direction.
Yeah, we had talked about it. Let's look at it. Everybody give them the... Well, I'll open up for a motion then on the agenda as amended.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Thurmond, a second from Councilmember Hewitt. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, City. Our next item's public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council, and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There's no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of the city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. You will have five minutes for remarks. So, do we have any general public comment?
We have four, sir.
Okay.
The first one comes from Carolyn Husk.
My name is Carolyn Husk. I live at 235 Hurford Road in Milton, and thank you for this opportunity. My question are getting permits for fences and code, okay? Two of my neighbors recently, or years ago, put up, got permits for dog fences, and the one had a professional person put it up and brought pictures and the two properties, and it's secure. But my next-door neighbor put up originally a dog fence in 2011, and it was what I thought a dog fence. And since he keeps taking the fence apart, and the, there's a picture of 2000, my pictures are dated, 2013, when he took the fence apart. He has a pit bull, and the fence is unsecured half the time. So about six weeks ago, I was on my property, and I had some work done. It's 620-some feet going down the property line on the side, and he had taken apart the rear section, and his pit bull has been aggressive to me twice, okay? So I called code enforcement. I had to make a couple calls because the first one didn't respond, so then Chris Williams came out about six weeks ago, and he walked the property line with me. And the one section, by the time somebody came out, he had, the owner had put, reattached the fence, but he was in the process. And there was another section, and I told him, I said, "The guy keeps taking the fence apart." So anyway, so he walked the line, and he saw where the dog could get through, and he said, "Well, the fence has to be secure." And then when he walked along, he, the guy had taken apart towards the front of my property, and he had like this old wood and logs and stuff all thrown all over his property, so he got cited for that. And anyway, so he said he was gonna have three weeks to correct it, and then part of the front facing the Hurford Road was in disrepair. He said he has to repair the fence. So he said, "I'll get back in touch with you. I'll call animal control and get back." Well, I never heard back from him, so I called him up again and asked him about it, and I said, "The situation's gotten worse." I said, "He hauled away the, all the debris on his yard, but the fence situation has gotten worse." So he said, "Well, I'll come back out." Well, and I didn't see him come back out, and I said, "He's put junk wood from his, that was laying on his property where the fence was, and then the section in the front towards the front is not a dog fence. I don't know what you call it." So anyway, so then he added another fence. So anyway, so he supposedly, Chris Williams came out and took more pictures. Well, I took pictures the same day because I was out doing yard work, and I didn't see him going along the property line. Well, my pictures show, he called me last Friday and said that the owners had come up to the City of Milton, met with Angela or somebody, I think it was last Thursday, and that the fence was in compliance. Well, my pictures show that the fence is still not secure. The fence that I'm showing, the pictures on picture three, four, and five, that's forty...
One minute remaining.
That's 45 feet from my, from my back door, and I'm carrying pepper spray now, and I'm calling because it hasn't, and I showed pictures of, pictures of 10, 11, 12, 13, or junk wood. And then picture seven, picture seven is the boards aren't attached, it's still in disrepair. My concern is that if it was in compliance with Milton, if you take a look at the pictures, how would you like to look at that mess? When I put my fence up with Fulton County, they had certain restrictions. You had to have the nice side, and everything had to be the same, and the nice side had to face the neighbors. So I think you ought to address your codes on putting up fences and everything so this won't happen to another resident in Milton. I have had, the landowner had been aggressive along with...
Five minutes has elapsed.
Well, anyway, that's why the thing was, thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. And while, again, as during public comment, we don't converse back and forth, obviously our staff will, let's give these pictures, make sure our staff has them, and if you guys can follow up with us.
We will.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, City, do we have our next comment?
Next comment, Councilwoman Scott Sawyer.
Hello, my name's Scott Sawyer. I live at 787 Quarter Path Lane off of Freemanville Road. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council, for listening to my presentation. I wanted to speak briefly in opposition to the conservation subdivision ordinance. My concern is that it actually increases development in Milton, is the opposite of what the goal is. After the recession, and land struck to be developed in Milton, the concern is that farms are being taken over with, being developed with single-family homes on one acre lot. The CSO seems to add more density to that and actually opens up land that's not currently available for development to be developed in our community. So the points I'd like to bring out is the CSO is not density neutral. It dramatically increases the Milton city population. There's no percolation test required, is my understanding in the CSO, and so any existing land could be developed through passing this ordinance. It would allow the introduction of private sewer systems throughout the county, which is something that was not currently part of the structure here. It's septic at this time. So as I looked, and you can run these numbers yourself, if, it opens up land that can't currently be developed, so we could lose up to 2,000 acres of land, particularly in the northern part of the city. Add about 1,600 new cars to the city, add two per home, about 3,000 new residents, four per home, and you would add actually new smaller homes to Milton at $400,000 approximately versus the current 700,000. I noted in the CSO, it has cottage homes, different types of homes, and then not just larger homes. So it takes, actually, your tax base would be decreased possibly through passing the CSO. And the CSO development portion to hand out kind of outlines how I come up with these numbers, so you can run them yourselves. They may be on the high side, but you have the opportunity to look at that yourself and see what you end up in the community by passing that ordinance. It's about 800 new homes throughout the county, which is quite a bit of increase, and ultimately it would result in a loss of green space and more City of Milton traffic congestion. So I would recommend or propose you vote no to the CSO, and encourage smart AG1 development as far as conservation, that goal there. Continue to develop AG1 and not focus on the CSO. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And just to clarify, that, no, no, you're fine, sir. Just to clarify, we've, the CSO is on our first presentation, which there's no public comment allowed on that, but I did check with our attorney in public comment and general public comment. You can speak on anything you'd like, so. Okay, City, next item.
Next item, the next individual speaker.
I'm sorry, next person, speaker.
Is David Damiani.
Good evening. As my new friend Scott just outlined on the CSO, which I'm here to speak. David Damiani, 935 Posto Close, Milton. And as Scott just outlined, there are a number of reasons why I think you all should oppose the CSO. I'm not going to go through that laundry list of items which include density, percolation, cost, et cetera. I'd like to ask you all a question with all due respect, and I know you can't converse back and forth, but what I'm concerned about is, this is the third time this proposal has been rejected by the Planning Commission. I've written letters, I've written emails, I've been up here before, and I'd like to know why we're still having this conversation. It seems to me that you all engage the Planning Commission to make recommendations one way or the other. The Planning Commission's come back on three occasions and rejected the idea, and we're still having the conversation about this. And at what point are you all going to be satisfied? Are you going to wait till you get the answer you receive? Or are you going to wait till the folks in this room who are spending time away from their families during the dinner hour come up and express opposition, and then you win on a vote of apathy? So I think it's time to close this deal tonight. I'm tired of having my neighbors corralled, folks in the community talking about something that has been rejected, not once, not twice, but thrice. And I'd like to close with something that I think we're all familiar with, and if we're not, we should re-familiarize ourselves with it. It's Division Statement of Milton. Milton is a distinctive community embracing small-town life and heritage while preserving and enhancing our rural character. In no way does the CSO embrace that, and nowhere in that vision statement is it talk about increasing the tax base. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I know in public comment, we don't discuss back and forth, but just for general public knowledge, because I've had several people make comments or emails, the Planning Commission is a, is a, their decisions are not binding. They give us recommendations, but each item has to come before the council for a vote, whether approved or not. So again, the CSO is on the first presentation tonight, and then subsequently December 7th. So no matter what or how many times another body rules on it, to get the final rule in, it has to come before the council, so. City, next.
Our final individual is Heather Creeran.
Hello, everyone. Heather Creeran, 325 Taylor Glen Drive, and I feel like five minutes is like a decadent amount of time, so thank you. Now that the whole city council is present, I want to again focus on my three main objectives concerning the CSO, and expand a little bit from my comments last week at the joint meeting. First, and most importantly to me, is that you vote no on the CSO and kill it once and for all so that we can move on to finding the right solutions for Milton. The CSO is simply not right. You've heard the reasons time and time again, and perhaps I bring a unique perspective because we lived in a CSO before moving to Milton out in California, and I can tell you firsthand, it is just no solution for our community. It stinks. Houses basically on top of each other will destroy our unique beauty and character. That plus community sewer are just completely unacceptable trade-offs for what was aspired to be accomplished with this CSO. And all you need to know is that we do have a terrific Planning Commission, and they did unanimously reject it three times. Second, a packet of emails was recently released, and at the last Planning Commission meeting, it was stated that the consultant probably had a lot of explaining to do. The commission and city attorney went on to discuss that there were emails as far back as January from our hired consultant that said the CSO was not a good idea for Milton, that things were insurmountable, such as not having a sewer, and that Randall Arnt, the creator of the CSO concept, concurred that it was probably not a usable tool for Milton, which was echoed in an email by a third consultant in June. As was requested at that meeting, questions, have a complete set of emails been obtained and reviewed by the city attorney and manager? And has an independent assessment been made of their impact to the CSO and the process? And more importantly, as you all are preparing to vote, are you convinced there was no conflict of interest or inappropriate lack of transparency around this process and the motivations of the players involved? And finally, I once again request that you vote no for the CSO, and that you send the AG1 modifications to the Planning Commission, and let them come back to us with the right solutions for Milton. Thank you again. Good night.
Okay, thank you. All right, City, does that wrap up public comment?
That's all, sir.
Okay, we can move on to the next item, the consent agenda.
Our first item under consent agenda is approval of the October 19th, 2015, regular city council meeting, Agenda Item Number 15-289. Next is approval of the November 2nd, 2015, regular city council meeting minutes, Agenda Item Number 15-290. Third, approval of the audit engagement letter with Malden and Jenkins, LLC, to audit the city's financial statements for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2015. Agenda Item Number 15-291. Our fourth consent agenda item is approval of a contract agreement between the City of Milton and Wanna Play Baseball, Inc., for the concession stand operations at Bell Memorial Park. Agenda Item Number 15-292. Our fifth and final consent agenda item this evening is approval of a lease agreement with Pitney Bowes, Inc., for mailing equipment. Agenda Item Number 15-293.
Mayor, I'll move to approve the consent agenda as prepared by staff.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, Councilmember Lusk, and a second from Councilmember Morrig, for approval of the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, we don't have any items under reports and presentations, so I believe we're moving the CPAC up to the before first presentation, so call that item, City.
This item is consideration of a resolution appointing members to the City of Milton Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee. I appointing members from at-large District 1 Post 1, District 1 Post 2, District 2 Post 1, District 2 Post 2, District 3 Post 1, District 3 Post 2. Agenda Item Number 15-298. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay. I, I'll start with my appointment at large, is I am appointing Lauren Holmes for position representing me. I think all of you guys probably are, or, no, Lauren, but, so, we'll move on. Do we need to vote on these individually?
Please.
I would recommend it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, when I ask for a nomination to approve Lauren Holmes for my committee member. So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Longoria, and I think a second I heard from Councilmember Hewitt for Thurmond, so. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you. We'll move next to Councilmember Coontz.
Yeah, my appointee is Mr. Tom Gogger. Got a chance to know his wife, Kim, very well with the Friends of Milton Library, and Tom was dragged in too, so he's, lives in our district and very active in the community, and we're glad to have him here. So I would like to have him be the District 2 Post 2 appointee.
So moved.
Second motion.
Okay. Do we have any other council appointees? Then I believe we need to swear in, including, do we need to do a motion?
We need to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's right.
Yeah, all right. Do we have a motion for, to?
So moved.
Nominate Tom.
Second.
Okay, all right. We got a motion from Councilman Thurmond, second from Councilmember Coontz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, so I think the rest, do we need to just vote? Actually, I don't think we just have to swear in some other members.
I think, yeah, if either of those members are here, it would be appropriate to swear them in. For the council members that did not appoint somebody tonight, there's one other opportunity to appoint before the first meeting, which is scheduled for December the 16th, so if you would give some time and thought to that and bring forward a nomination on December the 7th.
Okay, so I would ask Tom and Lauren to step forward, as well as the other members that are here, to swear them out. Start out with everybody. You guys would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear and affirm.
I solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
The Comprehensive Planning Advisory Committee Member.
Comprehensive Planning Advisory Committee.
Member.
Member.
Of the city.
Of the city.
And I will support and defend the charter thereof.
And I will support and defend the charter thereof.
As well as the Constitution.
As well as the Constitution.
The laws of the state of Georgia.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the United States of America.
And the United States of America.
Thank you for volunteering and helping, all your input. We appreciate it. And then if you guys are signed, that's right. I always never want to fail to mention that our, our boards and our volunteers are what make, help make our city so great. These folks put in a lot of time and effort and really care about the city, so we appreciate everybody. Yeah, yeah, we're ready for, for the presentation.
So moving to first presentation, first presentation today is consideration of an ordinance to create a conservation subdivision, Chapter 50, Article 5 of the City Code of Milton, it's Agenda Item Number 15-183. First presentation at July 6th, 2015, regular council meeting, discussed at July 13th, 2015 city council work session, discussed at August 20th, 2015 special called work session, discussed at August 20th, 2015 regular city council meeting, and deferred to September 21st, 2015 regular city council meeting, postponed at the September 14th, 2015 special called meeting, published on September 21st, 2015 regular city council meeting agenda, but not discussed, and the presenter would be Kathy Field. Mr. Mayor, we move the other item to new business, so that will complete the first presentation.
Okay. Do I have a motion, a second, or first presentation?
I'll make a motion that we approve first presentation as read into the record.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Thurmond, second. Councilmember Coontz, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, City, move on to zoning agenda, if you'd please call the first item.
Our zoning rules this evening are at the second regularly scheduled meeting of the month. Mayor and city council considers a zoning agenda. These items include rezoning petitions, modifications of zoning, use permits, and associated concurrent variances, in addition to ordinances, resolutions, and text amendments. I would like to acquaint you with some of the rules and procedures for this meeting. The applicant and all those speaking... The applicant and all those speaking in support of an application will be allowed a total of 10 minutes to present the petition. The applicant may choose to save some of the time for rebuttal following the presentation by the opposition. Since the burden of proof is upon the applicant, the applicant will be allowed to make closing remarks, provided time remains with the allotted time. The city clerk will be keeping track of time and will inform you periodically for the remaining time for your presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards are received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. Before beginning your presentation or comment, please identify yourself by name, address, and organization, if applicable. Our zoning item this evening is consideration of U15-05, B.C. 15-05, 13650 Bethany Road, by Bethany's Rest, Inc., to request a use permit for a retreat, Section 64-1821 in AG1 agricultural, on 26.65 acres, using the existing structures, a concurrent variance to allow the existing vegetation within the 100-foot undisturbed buffer and 10-foot improvement setback, and not to plant additional vegetation, Section 64-1822B3. This is Agenda Item Number 15-282. First presentation was at the November 2nd Regular City Council Meeting. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The first slide before you shows the site outlined in red on the aerial photo. Current zoning is AG1. Future land use map shows this area, future use to be agriculture, equestrian, and estate This is the revised site plan that was submitted on November the 9th, which shows additional parking, which I'll make reference to as part of this presentation later on. Subject site is zoned AG1 and is developed with 10,045 square foot single-family residence, a 1,285 square foot pool house, 2,629 square foot barn, and a 1,069 square foot barn near the entrance of the property. Property contains 26.65 acres with an existing lake near Bethany Road, and Cooper Sandy Creek is the southern property line. Property is heavily vegetated along north and western property lines, with specimen trees throughout the property as shown on the site plan. Proposed use, in the applicant's letter of intent dated August 26th, 2015, a use permit pursuant to Section 64-1821 to operate a private women's day retreat center and concurrent variance for the subject property is being requested. The women's day retreat is proposed to serve local women in ministry or women who are married to full or part-time ministers. An amended letter of intent dated October 19th, further states that no additional structures will be added to the property, and the existing buildings with some interior modifications will serve the needs of the ministry. Based on discussions with the neighbors through the public participation project process, the applicant intends for the property to be private and gated so that only invited guests may access the property. Although the normal daily operating hours will be nine to five, there may be occasional evening ministry usage of the property, as well as occasional overnight guests. Additionally, while the current groundskeeper or home manager does not reside on the property, in the future, there may be a caretaker who does live, or may occasionally stay on the property. Also, to the extent that there is any occasional outdoor usage of the property, that usage will conclude no later than 10:00 p.m. The noise level will comply with Section 64-215 of the City of Milton zoning ordinance regarding noise. The applicant estimates that there will be an average of zero to 20 women on the property at any given time during the course of the day. There will also be likely be some weekly gatherings and/or quarterly special events that will have a higher attendance, but those will be the exception and not the rule. Based on the applicant's revised site plan, staff offers the following considerations. In terms of the development standards, staff notes that all the development standards for this use permit are in conformance with the requirements of the use permit, with the exception of B3, which does require a minimum 100-foot wide buffer and 10-foot improvement setback. They do not meet this standard and therefore are requesting a concurrent variance. This shows further development standards, again, they're all, all these standards are met by the applicant. Discussion of use permit standards, the applicant does not meet the required 100-foot wide buffer and 10-foot improvement setback. Therefore, the following concurrent variance is being requested. B.C. 15-05, to allow the existing vegetation within the 100-foot undisturbed buffer and 10-foot improvement setback, and not to plant additional vegetation. So it's not that they're asking for a reduction in any of these setbacks, they're just asking that not to plant additional vegetation than what is currently there. The subject site is heavily vegetated along the western-northwest property lines with some vegetation along the north property line. In addition, there are planted aragrees along Bethany Road that provide additional screening. Lastly, the large size of the parcel and the location of the main buildings provide additional protection from adjacent residential uses. It is staff's opinion that based on these conditions, relief if granted would not offend the spirit or intent of this zoning ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends that B.C. 15-05 be approved conditional. The proposed site plan meets the requirements of the rural Milton overlay district. The city arborist has reviewed this application and has determined that this use permit will not impact any specimen trees. An environmental site analysis report was completed as required by the zoning ordinance. Community information meeting was held on September 29th, and the applicant and their representatives were present at the community zoning information meeting held at Milton City Hall. There were 12 people from the community in attendance, and the following issues were brought up. Hours of operation, whether there be overnight stays in the property. How many people would be using the retreat on a regular basis? Will there be future development or other uses on the site? And they were concerned about potential noise. The City of Milton Design Review Board performed a courtesy review on this application on October 6th, and they asked the following question. Will the facility evolve into an event facility? Planning Commission reviewed this application at its meeting of October 28th, and they approved this application conditionally. They asked that Condition 1D be changed from a maximum of 20 people to 100 people, and to reflect the appropriate amount of parking for 100 people on the site plan. It is staff's opinion that the proposed retreat is compatible with adjacent and nearby properties if approved with the recommended conditions. And the proposed use does not appear to violate any ordinances or regulations governing land development if the concurrent variance is approved. The proposed use's effect on the traffic, full vehicular, and pedestrian along adjoining streets should be minimal. The required number of parking spaces is one space per lodging unit or five per 1,000 square feet of floor area, whichever is greatest. The largest area for assembly is 2,600 square feet, and this will require 13 spaces based on the above formula. The site plan indicates a total of 13 spaces on the site plan, and those parking spaces are not seen from Bethany Road. At the October 28th Planning Commission meeting, the applicant agreed to revise the site plan, and that was the one that I showed you early in this presentation, submitted on November the 9th, to reflect parking for 100 people, which is a total of 50 parking spaces, estimating two people per car, on the site to accommodate the occasional event that may require additional spaces. Although the site plan does not meet the required 100-foot undisturbed buffer and 10-foot improvement setback as discussed above in B.C. 15-05, it is staff's opinion that the large size of the parcel and the existing vegetation provides the needed screening from adjacent properties. The applicant has proposed the following hours and manner of operation. 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and occasional evening ministry usage of the property, and occasionally overnight guests. Staff notes that the use permit addresses noise, and this requirement is slightly more restrictive, and therefore the facility shall comply with the above-mentioned section, which is that section that is in the use permit. The applicant also proposes that occasional outdoor usage concludes no later than 10:00 p.m. If lighting is proposed, it must comply with a night sky ordinance, and the proposed ingress and egress to the retreat is via Bethany Road, which meets the minimum site distance requirement. Conclusion, if approved with the recommended conditions, the proposed retreat is consistent with the City of Milton 2030 future land use plan and policies. Therefore, staff recommends U15-05 be approved conditional. Additionally, staff recommends B.C. 15-05 be approved conditional. And in terms of the recommended conditions, they are, to the owner's agreement to restrict the use of the subject property as follows. To a retreat as shown on the revised site plan received by the Community Development Department on November the 9th. The hours of operation shall be the following, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Occasional evening ministry usage and occasional overnight guests. All outdoor usage shall conclude no later than 10:00 p.m. A groundskeeper or home manager may be permitted to live on the property. No more than 100 people shall be on the property at any one time except for occasional evening or weekend special events. To the owner's agreement to abide by the following, to the revised site plan received by the Community Development Department on November the 9th. To the owner's agreement to, the following site development considerations, to allow the existing vegetation within the 100-foot undisturbed buffer and 10-foot improvement setback, and not to plant additional vegetation. To owner's agreement to abide by the following requirements, dedication and improvements. Access to the site shall be subject to the approval of City of Milton Public Works Department. Dedicated no cost to the city, the following rights of way, provide at least 40 feet of right-of-way from the center line of Bethany Road, I'm sorry, of Providence Road and Bethany Road along the entire property frontage, provide a minimum 20-foot right-of-way mitre at intersection of Providence Road and Bethany Road. And that is my presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I can answer any questions.
Before we hear from the public or applicant, does anybody have any questions for staff? Joe?
Yeah, Kathy, I thought that was good information. I was a little confused on the average use, though, because 0 to 20 is a big range, and I'm just trying to figure out, not that it, I don't know that it's going to make a material difference, but are they expecting it to be more like 5, or is it going to be more like 20? Because 20, if it's an average, you know, 30 or 40 wouldn't be out of the realm of being close to the average, but it's way outside the realm if it's 5, so.
Yeah. We did have that discussion during the planning commission presentation, and the applicant, I think, would probably be better able to more specifically answer the daily usage and then the special uses on weekends or in the evening as well, was also discussed, which is why we ended up with more parking spaces for those uses as well. So we're dealing with the daily and then with the special events as well. And I thought the applicant could better answer that.
Bill?
Kathy, as regards the parking spaces, the increase from 13 to 50, is that an increase in impervious area?
I believe most of it is on the gravel, and it's impervious. They're not adding any, I mean, it's pervious versus impervious, yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
It appears to me that staff has changed their conditions to include that which was recommended by the planning commission of the 100 people, is that correct?
Yes, in terms of the parking spaces.
Okay. So that your recommended commissions are what, or conditions are what the planning commission is actually recommending?
That's correct.
Because I know sometimes what staff's recommending and what planning commission are different. This time, they're the same now?
Yes, they are. And the revised site plan of November the 9th that was submitted and which will be part of our conditions shows those additional parking spaces on it.
Okay. Any more questions before we hear from? I'll open it up to those speaking in support of this item. Sooty?
First speaker is Mr. Woodson Galloway.
My name is Woody Galloway with the Galloway Law Group. I'm here representing the applicant in this request for this special use permit. Bethany's Rest has contracted to lease this 26-acre parcel of land. Their intent is to provide a beautiful place for women to come, to rest, to reflect, to gather together, and to re-energize themselves for their ministry. In working with staff, we determined that the best way to do this is through a retreat use permit. That best fit the category. It was not a special events facility. We didn't need to go to that degree. And the intent is to use the existing structures, as Kathy pointed out. So we're not going to be adding any new structures to this. We will be adding some parking. Most of the parking, though, that is on asphalt, is parking that's already there. Primarily, the additional parking will be on gravel, so it won't add impervious surface to the site. The ministry will repurpose those buildings for their particular use. Right now, you've got seven bedrooms in the main house. For example, those won't all be operated as bedrooms. They don't expect, very occasionally, they might have overnight guests, but that will not be the norm. This is not intended to be a bed and breakfast or for that to be a normal routine. From the outside, the property will remain the same. As we've indicated, the variance is to deal with the requirement for 100-foot setback width that would be planted on the outsides of the site. If y'all are familiar with this property, which most of you are, it's a very beautiful pastoral setting. The intent is to leave it the same. The buildings are going to be the same. And the, and so the, we feel like the buffering is very adequate, and it'd be a shame to hide the existing buildings. It's a beautiful house that's there, that's there now. So from the outside, it will remain the same. At this point, I'd like to call on Karen McAdams, who is on the board of Bethany's Rest, and let her share with you the vision for their ministry.
Good evening. My name is Karen McAdams. I live at 12945 Hayden Hall in Roswell, about really five, seven minutes away from the property we're talking about tonight, and just excited and thankful that we get to tell you a little bit about the ministry that we envision being here. Hopefully, all of y'all know exactly where we're talking about. It's the intersection of Providence and Bethany Road. And a little bit of backstory on it, I used to drive by this property for years and years, and I would think to myself, who gets to live at a place like that? It's just an amazing, amazing place. And over the past year, over and over, I've met people who say the same thing, like, wow, that is such an amazing, amazing home. Well, I had the benefit of actually meeting the owners and becoming really good friends with Bill and Virginia Schroeder. 20 years ago, they had a vision for that property, and they loved what Milton represented, just the setting and the land, the wide-open spaces, and they saw building a home there for their family, a place where they could breathe, a place where they could rest and be refreshed. But what's really neat is they're a very generous family, and so they began to have groups come onto the property to enjoy it all. So they have housed missionaries there, they have had student ventures, met their FCA, they've had Legacy Academy to come and use, do bonfires there. So it's always been a property that's been shared with the community. And what we believe, what we want to do there is just really more of the same, an ability or an opportunity to really preserve the legacy that they began 20 years ago. Our vision, in short, is really just to provide a place for women who are either in ministry or whose husbands are in ministry to come and rest and literally just breathe, rest, and be refreshed. We believe that women who are rested up and are refreshed and recharged in their souls and in their hearts can go out, and they can be more effective in their ministries and their families and in their communities. And really, we believe that if we met that vision, it means that we're going to have fully alive, leading women, really changing, changing things around here. So that's what the objective of this ministry is. That's why we want to use a special use permit or applying for this. We believe it's a win-win for everybody. It's a win for Milton, getting to keep that incredible green space, getting to preserve this amazing landmark, but also it's a win for women who are in ministry. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The timer's about to go off, and I'm not sure it was reset from the five minutes.
So you have five minutes remaining.
Great. All right. Thank you very much. Just simply, staff has recommended approval, the planning commission has recommended approval... Just simply, staff has recommended approval, the Planning Commission has recommended approval. At this time, I'd like to reserve the remaining time for rebuttal or for your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Sudi, do we have any more comment in support of this?
We do not, sir, or in opposition.
Okay, well, then I'll close the public comment, and then the applicant wants to step back up. If there's any questions from, does council have any questions to the applicant? Matt?
I know we were talking about this being a place for women to come. Are kids coming as well? Is it just going to be adults?
Well, there's always the possibility for an event where people come together. The intent, though, is for this to serve women in ministry. So, day-to-day operations, it will be women that will come here to have a safe place where they can go and be recharged. That's the intent.
And the, I know nine to five are the ordinary operating hours you were talking about, but an occasional 10 o'clock?
Correct.
How occasional is occasional?
You know, this ministry is just starting, so they are just starting. They don't know where God is going to take this, really. So, it's hard to say, and that's part of the hard, you know, that's what we've faced in this in trying to set down things and parameters. They know what their main objective is, and that is to serve women in ministry and provide a restful place. You can't do that in this environment and have lots of people. You can't do that and have kids running around all the time. But special events for where they come together or where there's a Bible study at nighttime, it may involve men and women. We don't know for sure. But right now, the stated intent and their objective is to serve women in ministry.
Are you going to have bands there, live bands, music?
That is not anticipated. So, I mean, you know, you could, you could foresee a once, a once-in-a-while occasion where you might have a speaker come in and have an acoustic performer, that kind of thing. I don't see them having live music on this property. It's not really conducive for having amplified music on the site, but that's, but again, that's why we put in the noise ordinance and the cutoff times that we did so that the community would be assured, because that was one question that we ran across during the various meetings we had with community was, there's a bowl effect in this area so that sound travels in that area very well. So, the concern was, if there weren't limitations on that, then it could get abused. So, that's why we put that on there.
Okay. Any more questions? Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Just a comment, and I appreciate that last comment, since Bert and I are close neighbors there, we live up on the rims of the bowls. I appreciate your consideration in that point, sir.
Along those lines, I'm two houses across the street, and I think it's going to be a good use for that. I like, I like driving by it as well and sort of wish I lived there.
Don't we all?
And as an aside, I wish we didn't have to have a variance for not disturbing and undisturbed buffer in our, in the process, but I guess that's just the way it has to, has to go. But I'm in full support of this.
Okay. I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion.
All right, Karen?
I'd like to make a motion to approve for consideration U-15-05, VC-15-05, 13650, Bethany Row by Bethany's Rest, Inc., Agenda Item Number 15-282.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion for approval from Councilmember Thurmond, a second from Councilmember Coontz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We can move on to unfinished business.
Our first item is consideration of an ordinance reaffirming and establishing Chapter 46 of the Milton Code of Ordinances governing solid waste collection services within the City of Milton. Agenda Item Number 15-281. First presentation at the November 2nd regular city council meeting, Ms. Michelle McIntosh-Ross.
Yes, good evening. As Sudi said, this is a reaffirmation of the ordinance, of solid waste ordinance that we required to adopt every year. We did not make any changes from the last one, except for me alphabetizing the list of providers. So, do you have any questions about the ordinance or why?
This is one you'll see every November.
Any questions?
If you don't see it, ask questions, because we need this in order to be eligible for local option sales tax.
Okay. No questions, so I'll open up for a motion. Joe?
Mayor, I move to approve an ordinance reaffirming and establishing Chapter 46 of Milton Code of Ordinances governing solid waste collection services within the City of Milton, Agenda Item Number 15-281.
Second motion.
Okay, the motion from Councilmember Longord, I think it was a tie between Councilmember Moore and Lust, but I'll just say Councilmember Lust for this time, and a second, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous with Councilmember Hewitt, who stepped aside for a minute.
Thank you.
I don't think there was any specific reason he did, but that we can discuss here. All right, we can move on to our next unfinished business item.
Next item is consideration of the final service delivery strategy agreement between the City of Milton, Fulton County, and all other municipalities in Fulton County. Agenda Item Number 15-272. This item was deferred at the October 19th and November 2nd regular city council meeting. Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much. This was following the hope springs eternal, which is why I keep adding this on the agenda and will continue to do so until such time as we have worn them down. Eventually, I will have something to you that I can recommend that you adopt, but not yet.
The spring is not flowing yet?
It is not, but it is close. So, if I would respectfully request the council simply to defer this to the next regular meeting.
Okay. Any questions on that? If not, I'll open up for a motion for possible deferral.
Mayor, I'll move to defer a final service delivery strategy agreement between the City of Milton, Fulton County, and all other municipalities in Fulton County, Agenda Item Number 15-272.
Second.
To the, to the December 7th regular city council meeting.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lust to defer till December 7th, and second by Councilmember Thurmond. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, can move on to new business.
Our first item is consideration of a resolution adopting the 2016 City of Milton City Council regular meeting and work sessions schedule. Agenda Item Number 15-295. Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, we are asking for the mayor and council's consideration of a resolution which will approve the scheduled 2016 council, council regular and work sessions. You have before you an oversized calendar showing the 36 upcoming council meetings for 2016. The blue highlighting indicates the regular meetings and the red, the work sessions. In 2016, we have two regular city council meetings that will move to a Wednesday because of two holidays, those being Martin Luther King and President's Day. In preparing the calendar, we took in consideration the 11 observed holidays that the city observes, which are highlighted in green, and the Mayor's Day Conference in January and the GMA Conference in June. Our first regularly scheduled meeting in 2016 will be the inaugural meeting, which is on January 4th, which will be doing some swearing-in for three council members. 2016 council meeting calendar will be available to our citizens on the website if you do approve tonight. We respectfully ask for your approval of the 2016 council meeting dates.
Okay. Karen?
I just have one question. In the past, we have not scheduled meetings during spring break, which I know has made us to go like six weeks in a row. It looks like this time, we went ahead and scheduled it during spring break. I mean, I don't have kids in school, so I don't.
I think we had them during spring break, because I'm missing.
Well, in the past, we have usually postponed it, so we've ended up with having it at the end of April and then beginning of May. But I just want to make sure that that was an intentional thing.
It was.
Okay.
I think we have less children, little ones, in consideration.
I've got just a trivial question on.
I think you're right, though. I think we have tried to eliminate that spring break week. So, if spring break is four, four through eight, we haven't done that in this 2016 calendar. So, I guess if the council wanted to push those meetings in April to the 11th, the 18th, and the 25th, we could do that.
Is that something we could do at a later date, in terms of closer to that, or?
I'd rather us do it now and then try to.
I'll just say, I probably would not be available that week for a meeting, so.
So, why don't we move the April, then, dates to regular meetings on the 11th and 25th and a work session on the 18th? Okay. Now, I'm ready for the trivial question.
On July the 4th and September the 5th, I thought we typically slide them to the Wednesday. If we have a holiday, why, just curious why they're slid down to the?
I think because they are so close together, it really puts things on steroids, putting meetings that close, and we've got two Wednesdays already, so we've kept them on Mondays to space them apart.
I mean, the other thing we could do is we could go, we could go six, 11, and 18.
I don't really care, I just was curious.
Okay, so the only things that we have suggested we might change or are changing, if the council votes on it, is the April meetings to the 11th, 18th, and 25th.
Right. Yep.
That's it, okay.
Okay.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything?
I mean, if we don't move the September 1st to the Wednesday and move it to the next Monday, then we've got three weeks in a row without a meeting, and then six weeks in a row with meetings.
And we have six weeks in a row with the July and August, too, if we, as it's written. But again, I don't really care.
Doesn't show many.
That has happened to us this year, where we ended up with six in a row and then off three.
So, I'll have it three times.
Is that okay with everybody? Anyone want to tweak that?
It's fine with me. I like you guys, I don't need a prefer.
Well, what I'm worried about is having three weeks off, because I don't know that we've ever had three full weeks off, in case we need something to do.
Let's go ahead and let's change September, then, to the 7th, the 12th, and the 19th.
Is everybody okay with that?
I usually can't make those middle-of-week meetings. It just depends on my travel schedule, so, but it's okay, I'm fine with it. If you guys don't want to include me, that's okay.
Stacy reminded me to give this an extra week for budget purposes if we need it.
So, that probably, that probably makes sense. So, we'll recommend then that we change two things, that we go from 11, 18, and 25 in April, and 7, 12, and 19 in September. Okay.
Okay. Anything else? All right, now I'll open up for a motion with amended changes that Chris has captured.
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item 15-295 with the Chris-captured additions or changes.
Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Hewitt and a second from Councilmember Thurmond. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Sudi, send an updated copy of that, right?
I'll send a copy to everyone.
Okay. Move on to a new business, a new business item. Sudi, if you'll please call that.
Our next item is consideration of a resolution requesting the transmittal of a 2016 Livable Centers Initiative, LCI, supplemental activity and plan update application to the Atlanta Regional Commission, ARC, for their consideration of the Downtown Milton Study. Agenda Item Number 15-296, Ms. Michelle McIntosh-Ross.
Thank you. Good evening. Community Development has prepared an application to submit to the Atlanta Regional Committee, Commission if you approve this resolution. As you recall, we did our Crab Apple visioning study a few years ago with Lou Oliver, and then we took that visioning study and compiled and what would be an LCI application, and the plan got grandfathered in 2013. So, as an LCI area, the Crab Apple is eligible for additional funds from Atlanta Regional Commission to do supplemental studies. And now, since we have decided that the location of City Hall will be in Crab Apple, which was not a certainty at the time of the original LCI, we feel that now is a good time to take another look at the area within the context of being Milton's downtown. We want to look at the transportation network in terms of vehicular, pedestrian, bicyclists, and trails, making sure that we apply the complete streets throughout. We want to look at the new economics of the area to see if we need any additional land use changes and make provisions for parking for those land use changes. And as the civic center, Milton's Downtown, we want to identify a meaningful green space, a central green that would be easily accessible to Milton's residents. This is a competitive grant. The maximum that can be applied for is $100,000, and we are asking for that amount. We are required to match 20%, which means that we'll contribute $20,000, and ARC will fund $80,000. The application is due December 7th, so in the next few weeks, we will compile support letters if you approve this resolution, and then we'll send that off to Atlanta Regional Commission. Do you have any questions?
I have one question. I know we've been talking in the past about the parking deck in the downtown area, and I assume if we did this, we would lever some of their resources in determining the feasibility of that, I guess.
Correct. We've added that as part of the scope for.
Got you. I see it down here in parking, but just want to make sure the deck was included, the parking garage. Okay, got it.
Anybody else? Karen?
Chris and I met last month or so. I told him I really felt like it was important if Crab Apple was going to become our real downtown area, that we kind of take a step back and look at the big picture of Crab Apple. Right now, we've been so involved in all the little details that sometimes I feel like you need to just take a step back and, and look at the, the whole picture we're painting for the area. And I was excited that he found a way to try to get us some funds to do that, because I really think it's, it's going to be very important in making sure our downtown area is, is what we want it to be. So, I very much support requesting this LCI grant in hopes that they will approve it so that we can get a real downtown plan put together.
There's not many cities that can develop a downtown from scratch, so hopefully they'll see that and help us out.
It's not every day when a council member brings an idea up to you, you happen to find that there's a grant that's closing within 30 days, seems to fit, so.
It's all meant to be.
Some things are fortuitous, yeah.
It's all timing.
Any other questions?
Sounds good to me.
I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve for the resolution requesting the transmittal of a 2016 Livable Centers Initiative supplemental activity and plan update application to the Atlanta Regional Commission, Agenda Item Number 15-296.
Second motion.
Okay, we got a motion from Councilmember Thurmond, and it sounded like a second from Councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Sudi, if you'll please call our next business item, our new business item.
Next item is consideration of an amended intergovernmental agreement between the City of Milton, Georgia, and the City of Alpharetta, Georgia regarding lease and joint use of municipal court facilities. Agenda Item Number 15-297, Mr. Chris Lagerblum.
Mayor and council, good evening. You might remember at their last meeting that I left early to go down to Alpharetta to figure out why I couldn't find this agenda item on their meeting agenda, and it was not by mistake that they didn't have it on, and it was because they had some last-minute comments that came from their Parks Department related to the use of the facility. I can tell you the document that's in front of you tonight is a re, I guess reaffirmation or reconsideration of the entirety of the, of the document, although I'll tell you that it simply has one paragraph added that is different than it was last week, and it deals with the door that we can, or the doors that we can use to access in and out of the building. I mean, you might say, well, that sounds kind of funny, but in the ordinary course of doing business, this would not apply to an emergency, obviously, in an emergency, any door would have, would have access. But in the ordinary course of business, there's access to the basement of this building, and the basement of this building houses a senior center, as well as doors that push out and then do not re-lock if they are used, I guess, after hours. So, the thing that Alpharetta wanted included in the So the thing that Alpharetta wanted included in this agreement was that in the ordinary course of our business, that we would simply use the door that fronts Crab Apple Road as our access point for the people that are coming to conduct the business of the court. We can sign it as such, and I don't think materially that their requests alter anything other than it satisfies their Parks Department's concern for the programs that they operate in the basement of the building. If you adopt this tonight, it is on Alpharetta's agenda tonight. They'll be taking it up later tonight, and they'll be taking up exactly the same document. So if we both agree, we should have, we should have an agreed-upon document that we can move forward from before the end of the night. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? No, I'll open up for a motion.
Doesn't sound like a deal breaker.
We had to agree to an extra half a door to put at the top of the sterile case, so it was fairly easy to agree to.
Okay.
Maybe Rick can even put it in for us.
Mayor?
I have a question. I have a question for your motion. Just want to make sure, the cost of our doing this is going to be, what, about $3,000 a month? Is that right?
That is correct.
And the reason we were making the move was just because the judge wanted us to?
Well, there was some desire to be in a more secure facility to conduct the court than a room that has a wall of windows like this. It's also one of those things that when we talked about it, the opportunity and the availability of the facility is available now. There are two vacant rooms that match our needs. And we believe that there's the desire, at least I believe that there's the desire of both of the elected bodies to move forward with a partnership that seems right right now. So we could certainly, as I've commented before, we could certainly wait another nine months until we don't have this facility to make the move, but I don't know that the opportunity, sometimes those opportunities, programs seem to morph and fill spaces as space becomes available, and it just so happened that there was the right, the right available square footage in the building that we could make it make sense right now.
And the risk, if we didn't do it, basically, we don't know if the opportunity will be available nine months in the future, but if we do take it, we know we're spending $3,000 a month extra, of course, of what we're doing right now, right?
Yes.
Yeah, but I guess to clarify, it's a smart move for us to do at some point.
At some point.
Obviously, we know at this, at some point, we're getting rid of this facility here, so. Yeah, but the question, it, there's a possibility it could be done later, but may not be available. Rick?
Chris, I think we had talked about this, but a question as far as the operating cost, are we going to incur additional court operating costs other than the lease by doing this? Is it going to change our capacity to actually handle court in the same way that we do today as far as numbers?
Yeah, the room over there is configured a little bit differently than this room, and this room has non-fix seating, that room has fix seating. We have the ability to bring in some additional seating into the room over there if we need to, so initially, I don't, initially, I need for some time unless our caseload increases. I mean, there's difference between caseload increasing and us simply being able to push cases through the court system. I don't anticipate anything other than the lease cost as being an extra expense to.
Okay, so as far as the cost of actually, for personnel and for the judge, we shouldn't see any lease cost.
We're not adding any extra people. We're not.
No additional sessions right now?
Not that I, I would come back to you if the sessions are driven because of increased caseload, but I don't really anticipate there being any difference between the two facilities. Okay.
Bill?
One point that has come up in discussion in the past is the fact that where court is located now, right here, it's accessible to public transportation. What kind of challenges are we looking at by relocating over there where public transportation is not necessarily available?
You know, we researched that with the Alpharetta staff and with their personnel, because intuitively, and I've been the one that's been telling you that we need to stay here because it's served by public transportation. When I asked that real question of the people on the receiving end, they don't see public transportation as being an impediment to the location that they have for their court facility there. It operates three days a week, and they don't hear that people can't access the facility because it's not served by a MARTA bus. So what I thought intuitively may have been an issue in asking the people that are the doers, they tell, they tell me that practically, it's not.
Okay. Any other question? Okay, I'll open up for a motion.
Make a motion to approve Agenda Item 15-297.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion from Councilmember Hewitt for approval, with a second from Councilmember Coons. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. All right, it's like, we'll move on to reports.
Before we do that, Mr. Mayor, we moved the item out of first presentation into new business, which is the consideration to bend chapter 50 subdivisions.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
And create section 50-162 rural design. That's Agenda Item 15-294. Council, we moved this tonight, and as I stated, as you were approving the meeting agenda, the intent of moving it into new business tonight was so that you could act if you chose to act, to send this item, this document, back to the Planning Commission, as I thought was the direction at last week's work session. We're not prepared to make a presentation on it tonight. It is simply one of those things that if you do want it to go back there, this is an avenue that you can do that. If you choose not to send this back to the Planning Commission, I just respectfully ask that you then defer the item until the December 7th meeting and put it back in first, put it back in first presentation, I guess, so that we could start it and address it in a different course, but that's kind of why it's, that's why we moved it tonight where we did.
Okay.
Is there a Planning Commission meeting between now and the 7th? I know they talked about it last.
Well, there might be. Let me.
They talked, discussion last week at the joint meeting, we talked about the text amendments and how soon they were going to get into that process and discuss those.
There is a Planning Commission meeting on November 18th.
Okay. I thought Peyton had brought that up.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, I'll open up for a motion.
If the intent is to send this back to the Planning Commission for their continued study and design, et cetera, what is that motion? What does, what, you're not, the council's not deferring the item, they're actually sending it to a place.
That's correct, and this was the, this was the item that was the first review anyway, if memory serves. I think I would just remand it back to the Planning Commission for further review and input.
I'll make a.
To the November 18th.
I'll make a motion to remand Agenda Item 15-294 back to the Planning Commission for their further review and input.
Second. Let's just make it that we'll remand it back to their November 18th meeting, and then they can.
To their November 18th meeting.
Okay, that's your motion, and then Rick, just a second. Okay, I've got a motion from Councilmember Hewitt, with a second from Councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. I think we'll move on to reports now. Do we have anything else? You know, I did notice Mr. Chernick here. We'll, I'll be glad, just as soon as we get finished, we can swear you in tonight. It's good. Okay, we'll open up. Does council have anything they want to report on? Bill?
It's a request, and I've gotten a few emails, and I've met with one or two people from the community specifically on these text amendments, and there's a lot of confusion and misunderstanding about them, and I'd like to see some type of presentation or even if it's on the website, about what these text amendments are all about. We have some people under the opinion that we're going to start grabbing several feet off of their frontage in the roads, and if we could clarify what our intent is in this process in addressing these text amendments and help some of these people out there to understand what's going on, and we're not out to grab the land from them indiscriminately.
That might help us, too.
Yeah, so there's a lot of, you know, I've gotten lots of feedback on that where votes are concerned.
Okay, we'll work on how we bring something forward. I'm getting.
Well, it's possible, I think, but. Well, it is. I mean, just to state the obvious, but I know the council knows this, though, but the text amendments were supposed to sort of go along with the rural design, the CSO. I mean, the way it was at least envisioned at the drafting stage was a package, and so kind of, and I say this with all, what they mean and what they do ultimately is going to depend upon what the council and what, you know, what the Planning Commission recommends, I suppose, and then what the council ultimately adopts. So I can certainly put something together, work with staff, work with the city manager, and put something together that tells you sort of what these do right now, as they are framed right now. Yes, I can do that. And of course, we went into some of this at the joint meeting, where we started talking about sort of this viewshed buffer and what it does, what it doesn't do, whether or not it's legal, which my position is that it is, and constitutional. So I say all that to say, yes, I can certainly put together something that indicates what we are doing, and it is by no means a land grab.
Right. But just to clarify, even though if it is legal and whatnot, that doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to pass that.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I only clarify that, you're saying it's legal, but you're not promoting that or not. You're just giving the legal.
No, I'm just, I'm suggesting to you that by the time it gets to your view, particularly in the context of land use, you ought to expect that it's been vetted by staff and me, and it's nothing that I would, that is unconstitutional, at least to the best that I can make that decision. The policy is up to you, Mr. Mayor, of course.
The perception out there is reality. I think maybe addressing the length and breadth of this whole movement on these text amendments, possibly bringing the discussion in as to what areas of the city are involved, specific areas, and from my understanding, it's very small, discreet areas that are involved with these text amendments, and it's not a widespread discussion of the entire city out there.
The thing I want to say, because I don't know that we can do it, I don't know that we should do it, I don't know that we should ask Ken to do it, is to clarify intent, because ultimately, intent will be whatever the council speaks as to its intent at the end, and that intent will be the policy direction of the city. So we can, from a procedural standpoint, kind of walk through and maybe provide some clarity as how we started in a certain place and how we are, where we are today, and what it's intended to do today. But I'll be very cautious and just upfront with you all that I'll be very cautious at deciding what the intent is until the Planning Commission issues their intent, and then the council ultimately issues their intent, and that's then the policy intent that we follow behind.
Would it be better served if we had a, one of us had a town hall meeting? I guess, that might be a, and obviously, from that perspective, we did that, though. How would that work? Would you need to be there, Ken? I mean, each of us are council members, and we each represent different positions and different thoughts and ideas, and obviously, it's tough to give staff the direction to put something out there that we haven't passed, which is what you're saying. But obviously, we want to make sure that we're on the, up and up with regards to everything legal, et cetera, and don't want to commit to anything that we obviously couldn't do. We're not campaigning, but how do you do a town hall meeting in that regard?
Well, yeah, well, procedurally, pulling off a town hall meeting is very, is very easy. Procedurally, but as far as, to the city manager's point, what is, in fact, we're going to be discussing is a little tougher until the council has made their final determination. I mean, I know what is in draft form right now. I know what that is, and I'm very comfortable speaking to that.
You know, my suggestion, you know, a town hall meeting is good if you want to talk in generalities and get input from citizens and whatnot, you know. To me, if we're looking at this and we're holding a public meeting, that's basically, that is a town hall meeting on this specific item, so, you know, that way you've got everybody here and the entire council. That's just my suggestion that, you know, we need to discuss it in, you know, sessions, so. But certainly, each council member could have a town hall meeting on that specific item, but it might just be tough if you didn't have all your council, you know, get input.
The thing I just learned is that apparently the Planning Commission intends on, since the item is now back to them, they intend on holding some public quote-unquote "town hall" meetings in the next couple of months to get input, which certainly would be meetings that you could attend if you chose to attend. They'll be publicly advertised meetings.
The next couple of months?
It's going to start through February.
February, yeah.
That's what they asked for, wasn't it?
It is.
I thought we were trying to get to a point, I mean, we keep talking about this particular subject, and as everybody up here said, we all bring our own take to the table, all right? We need to make some decisions related to this, because this could go on forever.
Could.
I mean, this, this seems a little bit, I mean, trust me, I get it. This is one of the tougher things that we've talked about the six years I've been on the council. I can't remember anything, any discussion about a subject lasting this long. Maybe the Historic Preservation Commission, maybe. But, but that dealt with a whole nother government body, so there was a good excuse. We had the state involved, but this is, we've got to, we've got to figure out a way of putting some lines in the sand and saying, okay, this is going to be part of it. This is going to, and something else is going to be part of it, because right now, it's just, it feels like it's just too fluid.
So where it is right now is, after the work session of last week, in first presentation tonight was the conservation subdivision ordinance. It'll come forward to the council for your action, whatever that action is, on December 7th. So that one is coming, that ordinance is coming forward. The Planning Commission, when their review of the text amendments, deferred those items to remain with them till February, and there's, I believe, again, what the thought process was, was to send this rural design ordinance back to them so it could be partnered with the text amendments.
Right.
And come back to the council.
That's why I was reacting that way, because if we disconnect these by a big distance, then we're going to fall prey to what we didn't want to fall prey to. We wanted to have these things synchronized, but I get it.
Well, that depends on the outcome of the conservation subdivision ordinance.
Yep, could have a effect, yeah.
Okay. Maybe I overreacted.
Yeah, I mean, the Planning Commission did want to vet out the, these items, you know, and take a fresh look, because they had, if I remember correctly, they had kind of vetted some of them originally and wanted to take a fresh look at it.
Well, the, you know, the text amendments for February, the ones that are at least going to be viewed, I mean, they definitely link with the CSO, so depending upon what the council does in the CSO, it has a direct and material impact on candidly what the Planning Commission would even have in front of it, for, can, practically speaking, so.
I'm with you, Joe. December 7th. Let's take action.
All right.
Okay, so are we, you guys talking about changing anything?
Nope.
Yeah, December 7th, we're going to have a CSO, but then, everybody still good with the Planning Commission working on the other?
It's not a good day.
Okay. All right. I also want to, you know, Chris and Carter let us know that our project there in Crab Apple linking up to the new City Hall that where we were, you know, had a big gap in funding, and ARC was willing to come up with some of the money, and fortunately, DOT had stepped up and is going to cover the additional costs, so. And I don't believe we're going to have to match only the original part, correct?
Actually, our match is probably lower than what we originally anticipated. DGDOT stepped up with some safety funds to be able to fund the roundabout components of that at 100%, so we did better than anticipated at the end of the day.
Yeah, so, and just, you know, we sent that information over to our District 6 board member, Mark Burkholder, and he went to work on it, so just, you know, we owe him a nice thank you for presenting that to DOT, so.
Good job.
When is that anticipated to start?
A whole lot sooner than if you'd asked me that last Monday.
You know, DGDOT's going through their contracting components right now. I think they probably awarded that on Friday of last week, so however long it takes them to get through their contracting piece, I would imagine after the first of the year, first quarter of next year, they'd be. quarter of next year, they'd be actually under construction. Utilities may get started first.
Okay. All right, anybody else on the council? Not, we'll move on to staff reports.
I'm here, council. We've got one published staff report tonight, which is titled, "Future Direction on Implementation of Transfer Development Rights." I'm going to ask Kathy Field to come forward and kind of give an update of the council of where we are with some current pending projects, some of the difficulties we're having with finding land trusts to hold conservation easements that are just, that are available right now. And then I'm going to look for the council to give us some directions to whether or not after the city attorney weighs in, as to whether or not you are comfortable directing us to, to move forward, us as potentially holding these conservation easements as, as the city. So that's kind of the direction that we need. And you're good with that or bad with that. You know, I want to dispel any of the information that may be circulated around the city that is pat illegal, because I think we need to rely upon our city attorney to advise us as to what is legal and what is, what is not. So having said that, I'll let Kathy kind of frame the, the problem that we're trying to solve, and then we'll look to you for some guidance as to how we solve.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, we currently have three projects that have expressed interest in purchasing TDRs. And they're, they're varied projects. One of them is a town home project in Crab Apple. We've got a self-storage project here in the Deerfield area, and there's a hotel. And all three of those proposed projects are looking for, have expressed interest, I should say, in acquiring some TDRs. And the total amount of TDRs on those three projects is approximately 27 TDRs that are needed for this. So we would very much like to assist these development projects with their needs. And one of the things that we found out is that, talking to the person who did the first deal with our assisted living facility, is that the, the trust he used to hold the permanent conservation easement had a long waiting list and would really not be able to even look at his project until sometime in, in 2016, if at all. And it really brought to the forefront the difficulty that we had with that first project in terms of finding a third party, not being really in control of our own destiny in that using a, a third-party land trust, they really come with their own set of criteria in terms of what they are looking for, for holding this conservation land. So we really have to relate to, to their criteria as opposed to our own criteria. Secondly, they also charge a significant amount of funding in order to set up an, an annuity, if you will, to be able to inspect that property every year. And so we did have discussions with our attorney in terms of the way we had structured the TDR ordinance, in terms of whether or not we could make this a more simplistic process, we could establish our own criteria for which we wanted in terms of when we looked at potential land that would be set up in an easement, you know, criteria such as making sure that it had public access or certain amount of stands of trees or whatever we wanted to, to set up. We would have the ability to do that. We would have the ability to make a much more simplistic process, and we would have an ability to allow the buyers of the TDRs to not to have to spend an additional amount of money for that annuity cost that would be, in most cases, passed on to them to pay. So with that, we did talk to the, to our city manager and also to our city attorney in terms of how best we could service those needs that we see coming down the, the pike from these developers. And I guess I'm, have I set up the context framework enough, Ken?
Set it up for me. I mean, I'm, I'm perfectly happy to jump into this pool. If the council has any questions of me, please ask them. But, but I think the, the implicit question that, that Ms. Field is raising is, is I, is whether it's legal for the City of Milton to be the recipient or to be the holder of the conservation easement. If anybody hasn't flipped out the City of Milton Charter lately, you ought to. It's a great read, keep you up all night long. But the City of Milton was given tremendous powers. In fact, Chris and I have, I have laughed before that the City of Milton has given this power, listen to this power. "We have the power, is given the broadest grant of all possible powers for a city to have under the present or future constitution and laws of the state." That's remarkable. I'd like to get that drafted somewhere in some other jurisdictions I work in. Even future laws, even future powers, the City of Milton is, is given those powers. The answer is yes. I mean, the holding of, of property rights is of course an express power recognized in common law. County and city governments have it. It's built into your charter in multiple places. Not only does the City of Milton have the power to take action in the nature of public improvements, candidly for conservation efforts, that's actually built into the Milton Charter. But it's also just one of the bundle of rights that the City of Milton has with respect to any of the acquisition of property. Remember, we've talked about this before, property ownership is basically a bundle of rights. There's the bundle of ownership, there's the bundle of development rights, there's the bundle of access, there's the bundle of use. All a conservation easement is, is a limited form of that bundle of rights. It is in fact an easement laying over the property, as Ms. Field mentions, in perpetuity. And the City of Milton, if the question is, can we legally hold those conservation interests in that property? The answer is yes. In the TDR context, I got comfortable with that, although I also agree that I thought the consultant, I think it may have been Ms. Florio, made the argument with respect to, remember, there was some discussion about the city entering into a TDR with our own property. Remember that? I'm very comfortable that's, the City of Milton should not be the holder of the conservation easement with respect to its own property based upon the doctrine of merger. That interest in property with our ownership would merge, and therefore, there would be no, there'd be no easement at all. We'd simply be the owner. Because I suspect the public policy argument here is, is who is going to take the best care of that property to ensure that it stays true to the conservation use for which it was placed into the easement. I get it. I understand that there may be men and women of goodwill who believe that a, a, a private or a nonprofit, some sort of conservation entity may be the best entity to do that. But you also must compare that with the fact that I believe that going out and using these other entities is getting in your way of realizing the most conservation land. If it's getting in the way of a transaction, then let's don't let it, let's don't let it do that. Let's in fact use the power that the City of Milton has to be the owner of one of these easements, and let's get these transactions done. Because at the end of the day, that best manifests your will of using the TDR program as an incentive to get property into some sort of a conservation use. And that's what the City of Milton's ultimate public policy is.
So, sorry. So there's basically two parts to the definition of holding an easement, I guess. One is the actual transaction, transaction of the acquiring of that, and then the second is the maintenance of the property?
Well, the, but I think Ms. Fields did a good job. Maintenance, to me, is, is simply the confirmation that it is being, that it is being used consistent with the easement. And will that take a dedicated staff effort? Yes, probably once a year it will. It's to go out and perhaps just, I mean, I've not discussed this in any detail with, with the city manager, but I assume it would be as simple as going out and laying eyes on the property to ensure that it is still in the vegetated or whatever the state it was when it entered into the easement. I got to tell you, I believe the City of Milton will be very, very effective in doing that.
Or we can use Milton Groves Green Group or something like that, or however we choose to, to leverage our resources.
I anticipate that if the council were to direct us that way, that that would become one of the duties of the conservation program manager that you all have approved as a part opposition would be utilized in that.
Sure.
Joe?
Yeah, if you think about this long enough, it makes perfect sense, because we're in the best position to understand any, I mean, any use of the property that can go outside the bounds of the restrictions that the TDR would imply, because some conservation group someplace else isn't going to have the visibility and the access to what's really going on in terms of land disturbance permits or anything that could violate the intent of the TDR itself. So I think it's a, actually, to your point, Ken, it's helping get things out of the way of a transaction to occur. It actually is benefiting the landowner, who is a citizen of the, the city. It, it's doing a lot of good things in terms of helping out the folks that live in the city. So I would agree with that.
And I'd just say, too, I certainly would support, I've, you know, talked to several people, and the frustration, you know, again, this is one of those on the list that we compiled and of things we can do to help conserve land and all. So this is very important. And I've talked to several people that, you know, are interested or in talks, and it, the, the numbers they were talking about, the cost to, to monitor it and all was, you know, like ridiculously, why would they ever do it? And it does make total sense that, you know, the city's already got a staff, we've got staff members and can go by and inspect it and check it and make it a win-win for everybody. So, you know, I certainly support going this way, if legally we're comfortable and staff-wise we're comfortable. Rick?
So theoretically, we could, you could reduce some of the costs that today kind of stands as an impediment, as well as trying to find someone to actually do it. I know I shared some of the concerns that you had highlighted earlier when we were talking about using parkland and being a holder, and that, that was a concern I had at the beginning. But I, I guess.
And I was, and I, and I got persuaded on that. I did, and I instructed staff accordingly.
Okay. But as far as if the cost in trying to find a holder of that, I guess I'm more open to looking at this as maybe this is something that we could do, especially if we have the interest. But as, and as far as the actual cost of the TDR, that again is still between the buyer and the seller. We don't get involved in that. That's, that the market sets the price.
Bill? Remind me, how are we handling the, the first transaction that we did?
It's, it's done. It, it has been done. And there is a third-party land trust that is holding the easement on that. And that was five acres.
Right. So we're not in the position of supplanting that.
Not at all, not at all.
Organization at this point.
Not at all, no. That, that's intact.
Ken, did you hear? All right, well, again, I don't know if I'd add, I certainly would support that. Those are the other folks that, that could get some head nods.
Good deal, good deal. Thank you. That was what we needed. Couple of other things before I turn it over to the departments for their updates tonight. We need to name the road in front of the new city hall building. Now that we've just talked about funding, I know we brought that up a couple of months ago, but we now, now we need to get serious about naming the road that our new city hall will be on. That road will be shared with seven residential parcels? Seven, seven homes will be impacted by whatever we choose that name to be. Today, it is currently Brannion Trail. Brannion also connects over in a neighborhood beyond the vacant parcel. So the Brannions will never end up connecting at this point, based upon the road, the project that is being done out there. So I just need either some direction that you all want to give me as to how you'd like to come up with that name, if you'd like us to bring back some brainstormed ideas. We need to, we just, we've got to put a name to it. So are you, is anybody passionate, I guess, about how this name is, is chosen, or how do we procedurally want to get from where we are today?
The road naming passion has always come from Burt.
Yes, the new Milton Parkway.
You know, I do like something that maybe has Milton, maybe First Milton Avenue, or, you know, New Milton Parkway, or, you know, whatever. But I'm not, you know, if, if something sounds good and everybody likes it, that's, I'm fine with that.
I'm open to a survey or maybe a vote by, you know, online or something like that, just to get some residents feel as well.
At least the seven folks that live on it. You know what I mean? It's not, not that often that they name their road.
There's certainly a lot of history in the area, and a lot of the old families originated or settled in that area, too. So they want to bring them into the mix.
I like Main Street.
This is why. I don't want to point out the obvious.
You know, how about you get a group of two or three staff members, and you guys come up with some really good ideas that make sense.
Throw something in your direction.
And give us three choices.
And if you all want to reach out to your community members that would provide input to you, and you come up with some stellar options, you know, we've been down Main Street, we've heard Milton Place, Milton, so we could.
First Milton Avenue.
New Milton Parkway.
So how soon do we have to name this? Obviously, we haven't broken ground yet. The road doesn't exist.
I'd like to have it named before the, the second meeting of December. So let's get, let's try to get it named this year.
Well, let's, all right, going, going, as I said, why not, you know, obviously, Chris gets up your staff members, but any council member or, you know, that wants to reach out to the community would also have some ideas.
Send them your way. That'd be great.
So you guys can vet them.
I don't, I don't think it'd be bad to put it out there on Facebook, any suggestions for the name. I mean, not asking people to vote, but just say, ask people to go out.
More suggestions, you know.
Yeah.
Do it for schools.
We can certainly do that. I mean, we can all do it, we can do it as a city, we can do it personally, and just see what we get. You know, it, and I think it'll be nice to give it some, start to give it to some sense of place. You know, we did, and I'll roll this into the next thing, we have officially moved forward with the groundbreaking for that facility on December the 1st at 11 o'clock in the morning. As we were doing the invitations to be mailed out to people, you know, it was, we, we toyed between the idea, do we put at the intersection of Brannion and La Coma, or do you put behind the Old Blind Dog? And, you know, so behind Henry and Pearl, or behind some, a notable landmark that's there versus a street name. It's, it's probably, people would find it quicker if you oriented them to Henry and Pearl or Old Blind Dog, than if you said Brannion and La Coma, they'd say, where's that? So, you know, we'll, it'll help us with some of that marketing and branding as well. So December the 1st is that groundbreaking at 11 o'clock in the morning. We have a Christmas tree lighting on November, November the 28th. That will happen at the intersection of Webb and Highway 9, so we'd like you to attend that as well if you're available. I can tell you, even more current, more, more, sooner than that, is this Thursday, we will have our Thanksgiving lunch here at city hall in this room. The neat thing about the Thanksgiving lunch that's going to happen is the seniors from our senior center are going to come down here and have lunch with us. So if you happen to be around the, the lunch hour on Thursday and wanted to interact with the city staff as well as the seniors that are from our senior center, please come by here. It'll be in this room, and we'd love to have you.
And I'll just add, if you want turkey, get your own.
Yeah.
11:30?
11:30-ish. You know, it's one of those things that spaces itself over the lunch hour, because the public safety officials kind of stagger in, because we kind of rotate them through. So if you come between 11:30 and one, I can't promise you'll get turkey, but I could promise you'll probably have people in the room. If you want the, the good food, I'd get here about 12, 12:15.
And that was this Thursday?
This Thursday.
Not sure.
I will be out of town, so. I will not be able to attend this time.
The Christmas tree lighting, is that 6 to 7?
I will be learning how to have.
It is at 6, with a lighting at 6:30. So it'll be a fairly fast program. The last thing is, I know there's always discussions about fireworks in Milton and horses in Milton and all that good stuff. Had good, good communication today with the representative from Holly Springs, Representative Turner, as well as Senator Albers, who represents us, on the, the possibility of House Bill 15 in next, in the next legislative cycle, which will return local control back to cities in the fireworks ordinance. So I just want to say that we've made some of those contacts and starting those discussions now. I talked to a lady last week who had a horse that was injured allegedly from a firework. So I just want to tell the council that we're not asleep at the switch, and there is some legislation that is in the hopper. Representative Turner brought it forward last year, and it's still an active piece that he hopes to get passed this year. So it'll be something that, as a council, we probably want to take an opinion on as the legislative session commences, just so that you can vocalize to, number one, our delegation, as well as the bill sponsor, are either support or non-support, but I don't know why we wouldn't support it. It seems like it makes very good sense. So I just wanted to let you know that those discussions, those communications are occurring. I don't have anything more than that, so let's, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them at the end. But let's jump into the department updates real quick. We've got five tonight, starting with Chief Edgar.
Good evening, Mayor Council. I just have a few items. We had the opportunity to do some live fire training last week, and some of our staff, as well as council, had an opportunity to participate. But more importantly, our staff and our firefighters were able to practice search and rescue skills, search and rescue, and find a down firefighter, bring that person out, and treat that person, as well as looking at some new techniques in firefighting and the way fire travels. So it was really a good opportunity for our guys to actually. So it was really a good opportunity for our guys to actually see a fire start, and then roll as it goes up through the home, and then how to use some of the new techniques that's being studied today on how to extinguish those fires, and make it more tenable for the firefighters to get in quickly and rescue people and get out. So it was some great training for us, so we appreciate the opportunity and the, the property owner giving us that opportunity. We're working with the Communications Department, Angela, and the Police Department on revising and updating and our emergency communications plans, which includes Code Red, Facebook, Twitter, as we come into the season of the snow and the ice and all of that, and any other events that may come before us. So we're just making sure that those plans are in place, they're working properly, more people are trained on how to use Code Red, and when to use that program more effectively. So. The ladder truck update, our apparatus committee went to Ocala a week and a half ago, and they met with the engineers, they finalized the design of the new ladder truck, and everything's on board. And what we learned from the president from the company was that we're likely to see that apparatus here this summer, which was good news. They said they didn't see any reason why it would not be here that early, so, so we'll hold them to that, hopefully. Couple of community events that kind of stand out. We had an opportunity to participate in the United, Birmingham United Methodist Church Veterans Day event. And also on the veterans' side, if you've noticed, and by my end, the fire stations during the night, we are part of that, we are participating in that green light event program. I don't know if anybody's familiar with that, but all, all our fire stations are lit with a green light in honor of our veterans, and we're going to keep that up until the end of the year, so, just to support them and show them how much we appreciate they're doing for us, and have done for us. Participated in Kings Ridge Career Day, and we partnered with Home Depot and did a fire safety presentation with them. And we also participated in the Verizon Fund Run this, a couple of weeks ago, so, all good stuff. Any questions?
I had a chance to go out there for live fire training, and I appreciate the invitation, and enjoyed it as usual, and almost don't smell like smoke anymore after a week, but it's, it's always amazing to see, you know, you think going in, fighting a fire is just put the hose on, and, and it's a lot more to that, than that, so thank you for the opportunity and the hospitality.
Glad you joined us.
You look like an action hero.
I felt like it.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right, Stacy?
Okay. Bernadette isn't here tonight, she had a sick child, so I'm going to handle the finance reports. As you can see, property taxes collected as of October 31st is about 86%, and that is about normal for this time of year. We'll have better numbers for you in November for that. The general fund revenues and general fund expenditures for September will be available whenever the cap is finished, which will be around March of 2016. And the October numbers, we've been backed up, because we've been working on the end of the year for fiscal year 2015. So those numbers should be available the beginning of December, the first meeting of December. So some of the stats that she wanted to report to you dealt with delinquent property tax For this, this time this year, we're mailing out about 875 delinquent tax bills, and that is about the normal range, again, for this time of the year. It, it equates to about $570,000 that we are trying to collect. Alcohol beverage license renewals were due today. They were supposed to do, be due on the 15th, which was yesterday, but we could, we kicked it out to today. There are still a handful of businesses that have not renewed their alcohol license, but I am glad to report that our usual delinquents are not delinquent this year, so that's good. And we're hoping to get the rest of those before December 15th, because by December 15th, if they do not renew, then they will have to apply as a new applicant. I will be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, Bill?
Stacy, on our property tax collections, how did it drop from 99.9% in July to 90.9% in August?
It's a different tax year. That was 2015, or 2014 taxes that were reported in July, and then in August, I think there were some supplemental bills that were sent out. And then September forward would be 2016 tax bills. So the reason why it, it jumped down from 99.9% to 90.9% is because supplemental bills were added back into that number. So we had additional bills go out, so the tax collected percentage went down a little bit.
Dollar-wise, what does that represent?
I don't have that number off the top of my head, but I'd be happy to give that to you.
Thank you.
Joe? I'm sorry. Karen, anybody else?
He asked a question I was going to ask.
Okay. All right, thanks, Stacy. Jane?
Yes, I'm wearing a tie.
A racing stripe, it's not a tie.
It's, it's a fire tie. I did get a chance to join in on the, the live burn last week, and it, it was, it was an experience. I, I guess I have an idea what a baked potato feels like now, but in, in all seriousness, you know, as, as much respect as fire demands in a controlled environment, it just demands 10 times that in an uncontrolled environment. I really appreciate Chief Edgar letting me do that and learn about it, so it was, it was very good. As for IT, we had 95 tickets last month. It's ticking upwards, and, as it should. We're well into pilot testing now. Usually as an, an IT person, I hesitate to tell people to nitpick, but I'm encouraging them to do it at this time. Now is the time to let me know of anything that might be going on, large or small, and, and people are responding to that. So VC3 is doing very well on, on keeping tabs and everything, and addressing things that affect everybody, and even down to the individual level as well. So they're, they're doing very well. That's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from there? All right, thanks.
One thing that Dave learned at the fire training is, is he asks something to the f- you know, what if my oxygen goes out or something, they all told him to call the help desk and.
Get the response in 24 hours.
All right, Angel?
Good evening. I want to first thank you all for that came out to our Veterans Coffee. That was very popular. We will slowly grow it. I know we didn't have a tremendous attendance, but with any first event, it was very successful, and people were very grateful for the event, so. And of course, on social media, we had great feedback for everyone that couldn't make it. A couple of things to note, the Milton Literary Festival was this past weekend, and it was successful, with about 120 attendees, and we will probably just grow from there, which I look forward to having city hall to grow into, so. The Milton Tree Lighting is coming up on Thursday, I'm sorry, Saturday, the 28th, from 6:00 to 7:00, as been previously mentioned. We have Christmas in Crab Apple from 2:00 to 5:00 on December 5th, and then we have the Pancake Breakfast on December 12th at 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. I did want to also thank the Crab Apple Community Association, they gave us a grant for the Village Volunteers of $500, and that is an unbudgeted program, and we will be able to provide crafts and things like that with that grant. So thank you to everyone at the Crab Apple Community Association. That's all I have for tonight. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Sam?
Since my last report, just wanted to update you on a couple of things. We've managed to make it through open enrollment, and do some major pay changes and for the new fiscal year, and those went through pretty smoothly. Saying this in part for Ken's sake, last week I was afforded the opportunity to go to the Georgia Local Government Personnel Association, sat through some training conducted by Megan. She did a bang-up job, really enjoyed that training. On a report, and don't want to take away Sarah LeDart's thunder, what, next time she's up here, but the Alliance for Innovation, our committee is going to take on performance management. So we'll have a group of employees from across all city departments looking at performance management and how to implement the best program for the city. And probably at your next meeting, you'll see a bunch of our defined contribution pension plan documents coming across. It's a requirement that we restate those for the IRS for the coming year, so that'll be coming your way also. Are there any questions I can answer?
Any questions for Sam? Okay.
Great. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Okay. We don't have any executive session, so.
I have nothing further, unless the council has any questions.
Anybody else have anything? No, I'll open for a motion to adjourn.
That would be you.
Okay. Do we have a second? I have a motion, second, adjourn, all in favor, please say aye.[1795.13]